All right, let's move along quickly and we'll hopefully get out of here without doing too much damage. Uh, let's see, first of all, let's, uh, chair and entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting of November 27th, from last year, the special board meeting of December 20th, and the regular board meeting of December 4th, 2007.
Mr. President, can we do that individually?
They should be done individually.
I move we approve the minutes of the special board meeting of November 27th.
Second?
Questions, comments, or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The special board meeting of December 20th?
I would move that we approve the minutes for the special board meeting on Thursday, December 20th.
Second?
Comments or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And the last one, the regular board meeting December 4th, 2007.
I'd recommend that we make just a minor addition, comments from the floor, and add the first sentence, and just to include County Circuit Court Judge Bench Four, because this is a new position.
Catch that.
Then I move we accept the meeting minutes from...
Called Bench Four?
Yes.
Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Harris can confirm that when he introduces himself in a moment or two.
So that's your motion?
Motion to accept the board me...the minutes of the board meeting in December 4th with that minor correction.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. William was first. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. All right, comments from the floor, and I believe we do have a distinguished guest tonight, who would like a few minutes of our and our collective time?
Uh, well, they don't want to take a few minutes, but it would take a few seconds perhaps to introduce myself. My name's Chuck Harris. I'm an attorney from Hudson here. Have lived in Hudson for 30 years. Started practicing here, directly out of law school, had clerked with the Gwynn &amp; Fessler Firm in Hudson while going to law school. Shortly after coming to Hudson, I started practicing law with C.A. Richards and Bob Wall, and when C.A. went on the bench, I started practicing with Door Drilling and Scow in their Baldwin office. I hope to have a chance to serve the community on Branch Ford of the circuit court. That is a newly created position due to the need for more judges in our county. I have wide experience in probate and real estate and litigation, both on criminal side and the defense side. Think that my background would enable me to assume the position with both feet on the ground and running, so to speak, to improve the efficiency. From the trustees' point of view, I just wanted to reiterate myself with some of you and meet some of you I haven't had a chance to meet. I have had a chance in private practice to work some in zoning issues and real estate issues that are important to all of the governmental bodies and are coming right now with growth problems, and from your point of view, that might be worth your consideration as citizens when you're going. So, I thank you for your time. I will apologize that you did spend a fair amount of time working here earlier, so I'll let you get back to your work.
Good.
Thank you for...
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, the Plan Commission. If you would stand and introduce yourself, kind sir.
I'm Mike Meiser. I'm chairman of the Plan Commission. We had our regularly scheduled meeting on December 19th, and, you know, it was close to Christmas, we had a lot of business to take care of. The first item was, Bill and Paula Coats own a five apartment building on Fifth Street North that they wanted to convert to condominiums, and they discussed, they discussed what...they brought in their paperwork and we looked at it. Everything is already set up to be like condos, it has separate water and sewer and all the things they have to be. Already looked at it, and the engineer looked at it, and they had a couple of minor changes he was making to it that, you know, there wasn't a lot of dogs, and there was going to be two parking stalls per unit, otherwise the documents he gave us were what he said would be, and the Plan Commission voted to approve it. I don't know if it requires any action on your part or not.
Ultimately, it will.
Okay, it will. Okay.
I'm assuming it's a granting of a conditional use permit?
There was a conditional use permit from a previous owner, when Harvey was on it. And, so he came in and we approved, or we recommended approval of the change, and I don't know what the next step is.
So, to the extent that the conditional use permit was modified, is that really what you dealt with?
It...
Isn't it no other also?
It's a different owner than who got the original conditional use permit. I don't believe, when he bought the building, that he changed the conditional use permit. But he changed the use of the building from...now, now each of the five tenants will own, you know, their own building, their own space.
Would I be correct in assuming that if the Plan Commission recommends approving that, then that should come to the board, because that does represent a sufficient change in the terms and conditions of the conditional use permit?
The conditional use permit is based on the title of the building, and now it's going to be condominiums, so you would need to take action to approve the change in the conditional use permit.
Same routine, and we didn't have any problems with it. Next item was, Colleen came and talked about the park plan. We've gotten a previous copy of it, since we had time to read it, and we just discussed what it was about, and it looked good to us, to approve that too. And then the next three pages of minutes, was one of the last items, is we had our second... let's see, we heard about the grocery store plan from Mr. Dean Hanson. We had tabled it the last time we discussed it for insufficient information, and without getting into all the details, all the things we talked about, the summary of all this is, it's a lot better, the application was much more complete, but not enough complete to be able to approve it. Minor changes, the square footage of the store was reduced from 34,000 something to 32,000. They still had not heard back from Department of Transportation regarding widening roads or putting extra entrances, and that's a key point to approving anything, so we have to wait on that. Village Engineer recommended, the DOT recommended traffic impact analysis, and those results went back in. We talked a lot about how effects the neighborhood, what the boroughs would look like, noise, issues like that.
As is currently laid out, with the actual exits that would come out onto Station Lane, would they actually hit somebody's front of their house, or would it hit somewhere other?
The drawings showed where it would be, and I don't know where it was in relation to the house, but they showed just one spot where vehicles come in, and an island in between, and then where vehicles go out. He showed a separate lane, a right-hand turn lane on Station Lane. I don't know if that requires proof from DOT, you know, we didn't have any documentation from Department of Transportation.
They did mix the ability to have a separate entrance right off of 35E.
Which is what they would really love to have, and...
But there's no way of getting...
They're saying that probably won't happen, but the formal disapproval has not come yet.
Yeah, I think, well, even if they disapprove it, I'm just wondering, can we appeal that somehow? That's my question.
I thought that the histories indicated that mamas took the one turnout lane, but that's for that side, I thought, not for the west side. But, yeah, it would, it's a very good question.
Regardless of, you know, if they say we can't turn off 35, you know, that's...I would like to, I would like to challenge that ruling, or appeal that, just go on record saying that, and see what happens, and see the plans.
And none of us are traffic engineers, but, you know, as citizens, it sure seems to make more sense to have entrances on one side and an exit somewhere else to alleviate some of the problems for the neighbors.
How would we find out what the procedure for appealing that decision would be if they said, "No, you can't do it"?
I would ask that maybe...
I'd like to invite a representative in DOT to one of these meetings.
Yes.
And face not only this board, but also the citizens who live there, and explain why not. But, Mike?
Mike, you can too.
You're dealing with the agency of the state, and they have, there's certain review processes that could come into play if you wanted to challenge it. I will tell you this, in my experience over the last couple of years, DOT has gotten stingier and stingier on allowing access to anybody off their islands, and that's generally the statewide trend. It is its trend, that you cannot, it's almost impossible to get any access.
Yeah, I can certainly understand that, if you're talking about those sections of a state highway, where the speed limit's 55, and so they don't want to unnecessarily have people coming to stop signs and getting out, there's, oh, you gotta come up to speed, et cetera, et cetera. The highway, you know, the area we're talking about happens to be really within a residential Speed limit right there is 35, could just as easily be dropped down to 25, and so now you're really dealing with 25 mile an hour speed limit. So, it certainly seems like a somewhat, the nature of the request seems to be different than asking for a traditional just entrance or exit off of an interstate highway. It just, it just happens to be an interstate highway, but because it's running right through the middle of town, it's really like a city street.
I agree. Where does the speed limit actually increase to 35 going north?
At Tom, uh, no.
Okay, Summer Station? So, it's more of an issue when you're coming south, because there you have crap, you have cars that were traveling towards the 55, slowing down to 45, now all of a sudden slowing down to 35.
You're doing 45 when you come into village limits?
Right.
Then you drop to 35.
By right at that point.
Right there, right there currently in Station Lane.
And that to me is what's going, what would probably be their bone of contention about having an exit at that point. But I sure would like to have their representative here. The other thing that we should note, and I'll just throw out, is that there's quite a bit of right-of-way along that highway to that property. I think, I don't know what it is, it's 75 to 100 and some feet.
It's big.
You could do an awful lot there with that road to allow that kind of thing without hurting any kind of traffic flow, or making any dangerous or safety issues or anything like that.
On the issue of safety, it would be my contention, it would be a lot safer for that grocery store traffic to enter and exit onto the highway, if we can call that highway, than to a residential street, which is what that Summer Street is, or Summer, uh, Station Lane is.
Well, obviously, we're going to have some discussion on this, and that's good.
Yeah, it is necessary.
The only other thing I remember, there was some talk about the number of parking places that we needed or they needed, and I think there was going to be some talk about decreasing the requirement that we had in our ordinance for number of parking places.
What we did when we talked about that, without changing the ordinance, because the ordinance says we can look at more or less as needed. And so I took a sense of the commission right there and said, you know, to give them some flexibility, what do the other members think about reducing the amount of parking space? And everyone thought that would be just fine.
Yeah. I personally would like to see more green space rather than asphalt, but that, again, we'll hear more when we see the plan.
And then what we left there was, we went through lots of items that we needed more answers on. We needed shown on the prints, we needed a lot of the details. Mr. Hanson then requested that we deny his application based on the advice of his attorney, so he could meet directly with the village board. We told him, we're not, we didn't want to deny his application, we want to work with him and resolve him to concern, you know, resolve any concerns, so we can have a good product that everybody would like. And so, we moved at the Plan Commission table the conditional use permit application for grocery store, until all items are concerned or issues are addressed at a subsequent meeting, and that passed.
Good, well done.
Very good.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. Village website development and purchase approval requested is the next item, just to give everybody just a 30-second blip on what the history of that was. Several, several months ago, I had requested one of the trustees to volunteer to head up looking into the simple question of what would it take to update our website, and Sandra was good enough to volunteer to do that. So she has been working on that project for some period of time. She basically boiled it down to, there are two options. A, design your own from scratch, and then maintain it going forward, or B, tap into an already existing available website from a supplier who designs and installs at a pretty, I think you'll agree, pretty reasonable price, websites for governmental entities. So, we're here to, to kind of take all of the work that Sandra's been doing for the last six, seven months, wrap that up and make a decision, and hopefully at the end of the day, come out with a new website. So, with that, da-da-da-da, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, what we boil it down to is a service called GOVOffice.com, and they do absolutely hundreds, I guess thousands, websites for governmental bodies. They do, I believe Somerset, they have a lot of villages and towns in Minnesota, they do some higher-level sites too, and they also operate something called CampaignOffice.com, which in my business I've worked with a little bit, and they have another service, I forget what it is, it might be business-oriented. But they basically have it boiled down to templates, really, customizable templates, and the cost is based on our population. I just noticed that when I asked for an updated quote in November, they sent me this one from January, which we had done in January of last year, and that is based on a population of 3,463, which they supplied. Now, I don't know if 3,500 is a jumping off point, but I can clarify that tomorrow. I don't believe it would be a change, because that is the number they assign to us, so I think that's probably a census number. But, some of the things I wanted to point out here, the difference, and first I have a question for Gloria. The website costs on the, on the claims, the end-of-the-year claims, is that what we paid the website provider over the course of the year, the 6422? Is that about right?
Is that for press center? Not necessarily, that could incorporate a lot of different...
Other services?
We got mailbox, through mail...
Well, what we're showing here is a license fee of $825, $40 monthly service, which extends out to $480 a year. They will redirect our URL, which is northhudsonvillage.org, and for $400, they'll do a custom graphics package, which I had thought maybe that was something that we could do ourselves, but they really do a nice job, and they make it so it fits hand-in-hand with their services. So, for under $2,000 startup cost, and then the $40 to $50 a month. That's what we're looking at, so I think it's a lot less. The things that are different is that it's 100% web-based, we buy no software, we train no one on software. We do train them how to update, and it's updates you can do through the internet and then save, they're live. We don't have to go through a third party to do that, so that's a good thing. It's an easy service too, they make it very user-friendly. It's multiple-user secure, you can password protect, say Gloria wants password protect administrative areas, the police department wants to do some things, they want to have their own password to their areas, they decide who gets their password, Gloria decides who gets her password, so it's secure within areas.
I'd be like, so if she's got, if Gloria has area that she would want to update, she would decide whether she alone or who else, who gets the password to update that? Okay.
We can do customizable forms, it's, here's one thing that we would have difficulty doing if we went with just a regular designer, graphic designer, would be that we don't know what ADA compliant entails for a village website, and this, they make it so that it's ADA service-friendly for like visually impaired people, that when they pull up the website on their computers, that it will be compliant with ADA, which will soon be required of us.
Sure.
So that's one less worry for us. Also, we can do online polls and surveys, we decide what pictures, what minutes go on it, and when. I think the cost is really good, there's no update fees, we control everything, and there's options for additional service like more training. We are provided with up to an hour training, which actually is the point person, I'd like to do that and then help train the others here. I don't think that'd be very difficult for me. We can purchase more training, more space, we get 300 megabyte server storage space, which actually doesn't sound that much, but it's $25 per month more for, a third more of that, and also we can buy more customer service. And along the lines of what Jim was doing with his phone service, we can do a bulk email broadcaster. So those are a few of the things that that offers, and so if anyone's, if anyone's interested in looking more at their service, it's GOVOffice, G-O-V Office.com.
Have you talked to any other municipality around us that are using them? Or anybody else that's detected?
Not specifically, I talked to the guy here, and he pointed me to some specific sites where these folks have actually written testimonials. This company does a really good job of promoting itself, and it has testimonials that says, here's links to some folks that have done a real good job with providing government service online, and go look at them, go see what they're doing, and so I've done a lot of that, and people are generally very happy. And with the Campaign Office site we've used, I've heard nothing but good things.
Well, I did talk to one municipality who elected several years ago to, in essence, create their own website, and it's now a couple of years later, and so the individuals who work at that municipality literally have to learn how to write code in order to make even the simplest of changes in their system, and they hate it. And they know that, and they're coming with, and we know that there's another site out there where we, who we have talked to, Somerset is one, and I believe New Richmond is one, I think Little Falls is using that, and I believe everything I've heard so far is, this is the only way to go, because it's all done, and this is all they do is handle municipalities.
I've done websites, and I think there's kind of a cycle, we're in a cycle now where it was very complex, and only computer programmers could do it, and then they made it pretty easy, so it was user-friendly, and if you wanted a really basic, you know, just plain site, an average person could get the software and do it, it took some work, but now it's back on an upswing where people expect, you know, forms and surveys and, you know...
Interactivity.
Interactive features, and that's something that even as, you know, in my, in my graph, in the graphic design part of my work, is out of my reach, ever so slightly out of my reach, so I can't expect that the average person would want to undertake this.
In terms of interactive, could we get to the point, and I'm not so sure, and we're not ready to do this yet, but if we use something like PayPal or the equivalent, could we get to the point where if somebody wanted to pay for something in the village via a credit card, straight on?
I think so. Don't take that...
And then I suspect the other way, the practical question, if I wanted to pay my taxes online, could you do that? Because a lot of people pay all the bills online.
I don't know that we would want to get into that, because they, they get a little cut of it, you know, like Visa does, you know.
Oh, we don't share.
They charge, thanks for 3% to the person, payment.
They, they want to share what?
Visa gets a cut?
I know how Visa works.
Visa does.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, no, but what a lot of institutions have done is said, okay, if you want to pay online, you pay what you owe me, plus a 3% fee, and that's, that's, I've had businesses tell me that, and the reason is because, you know, I just don't make that kind of margin, and I can't afford to give that up. Same thing could apply here. It was more a question of, is the capability there? Sounds like it probably is.
No, I think that I had actually seen that on some sites, on some of these governance sites, but I can't tell you for sure, but, you know, as far as this company, they are one of the premier companies, and they're located in the Twin Cities, so they're, they're really growing, they're offering a great service, and they're really getting a lot of, a lot of towns and villages and county governments, smaller units of government, online with them, and really providing good interactive service for residents.
Now, we're going to start out with some kind of website, and over time, a year from now, two years, five years down the road, we're going to add things to that. You know, we just know we're going to. Most likely, we'd be adding sections. Is it expensive or difficult to add chunks to the, to the website?
No, they don't give you specific pages, they give you a block of memory, and you can buy more of this memory, or this...
Oh, I see.
Service space, whatever. So...
So how do they deal with, like, you know, most municipalities have their ordinances online, so if somebody wants to be up in the middle of the night and can't sleep, you know, read ordinances. How do they do that?
Well, they do work really well with, I need to somewhere...
I know that all of our ordinance printing is done by a firm out of Florida. Does that group just then just take whatever the current village ordinances are and just say?
Do we have it...
There's an electronic version, put a link, and boom, away you go.
It's a link to the Municipal Court Corporation.
Okay.
Well, then that, that takes up none of our server space.
That's even better.
I also wanted to add, well, the thing that really takes up room are like images, audio, video, if we could put up audio, video, and put up PDF forms, Microsoft Office. So, it says broad support for electronic media formats.
Okay. All right, so do you have a recommendation, or a motion, I should say? First of all, any other questions for Sandra?
Just a comment in support of this process. When we think of what it costs to run our business here, the business of the village, I'm thinking of those people who we pay a salary to, to take care of our citizens. Seems to me something like this could really ease the burden on Gloria, and Donna, and Jennifer, and the PD, when it, the whole police department, when it comes to being able, people being able to answer, have questions answered just by going online, and when it's easy to do. The more complex it is, the more time it takes for our staff to be able to update it. And what Sandra has done is found a company where it's easy for them to update, make those changes. That's my first comment. The second one is, in a little while, you'll hear Jim Thomas talking about an interesting and exciting program using telephones. We have been criticized, I'm saying we, over the years, the four... an interesting, exciting program using telephones. We have been criticized, I'm saying we, over the years, the boards and trustees have been criticized because of our poor, our inability to be communicative. And unless somebody had cable vision, they wouldn't be able to see us on TV unless they came down here. And that we don't correspond enough. Well, this is a great way, these, what you're going to hear later, as well as this, this is communication right here. And I think this will go a long way towards improving that fault of having poor communication. So, thank you, Sandra. You're like working on this. Appreciate it.
Well, it just makes so much more sense since everyone expects things to be on the website. And you look at our website and it really doesn't tell you anything. And, you know, it'd be nice, now that we have the park plan done, if it gets approved, that that could be on there. And just some of the other things that people are working on so that the citizens do realize that we are getting some things done that they had concerns about from the survey or other things that. So I think that's, that sounds like a really good deal. And with the ease of use too, and we all have our own little password to do our own section. It takes a burden off of what someone else having to do it for us.
One question I had, would it have the opportunity to do searches on that website for things like building permits? Somebody has a question on building permits?
Oh, yes.
Comes up with.
all content, including downloadable files in PDF and office formats, are indexed and cataloged, allowing visitors to search for and locate any information on your site. So site-wide and section-specific searches based on keywords.
Be very, very helpful for everybody, even us, you know, instead of thumbing through that book.
So these aren't as, you know, important or interesting, but integrated site statistics, page view and how many times someone has to ask for a new page or a section. Administrative audit log. So that the highest level user can look back and see what sections have been changed, when, and by who and instead of a level of security and oversight.
Why did we have to?
Well, when we look at, when we, when Gloria sends down a change and it costs fifty dollars and this is going to charge us not more than fifty dollars a month. Um, I, I think it's kind of a no-brainer. It's, um, if we build in a little extra, I would make a motion to Sandra to grant. For the startup, probably about fifty dollars a month. And this pays for the first year. So the two thousand would pay for the first year.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, I guess my motion would be to, the next step is that
There's more?
I would need to have Larry sign the purchase order authorization.
I do have a question about that. It says, I circled a couple of things on here, Sandra. One of them was date January thirty-first, two thousand and seven, and then I saw the sixty days from this date.
That's what I was referring to when I said, when I asked for an updated quotation, this is what they sent me because they had actually given me a quotation in January.
Last January.
Yeah, January two thousand and seven.
Right.
So, um, it's based on population.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that would be the only thing that would change it. I'm pretty sure it wouldn't because this is the number they supplied based on census data. So, um, I'd hold them to this because this is what they sent me a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So it's your motion to accept the bid from govoffice.com?
For a startup and first year, uh, cost of not more than two thousand dollars. And then the only, only future recurring fee would be the forty dollars a month.
Forty or fifty?
Forty, um, for this year.
Forty dollars a month, that's the lesson I pay for, just my internet hook up. Never mind maintaining a website.
Well, they do a lot of these so they can give us a good price. And they, they do their pricing based on population. So.
Do your cities pay a lot more?
I do have one question and it would be in reference to step seven. Upon completion of training, which I'm assuming is that one hour of training plus the unlimited online training, customer begins construction of website. Basically, does one of the staff have to type in, in some type of a, an easy-to-use format, everything they want in there? And scan in pages for PDFs that would have, obviously PDFs I believe take up less space. Is there a rough estimate as to how much time should be anticipated for the actual setup before it would move on to step eight and go live to the public?
Well, that was something that I wanted to, um, be the point person on. And I was kind of foreseeing it as something like Georgia's Building Management Committee that I needed, I would go to Gloria and I'd say, Gloria, what do you want on your pages? Um, I would go to the PD and say, what do you folks want on your pages? Make suggestions based on my experience and then build from there. Um, and then we could be ready to go live in a month. So I, I would be taking the, uh, the bulk of the responsibility on myself. I've done it before. It's not that hard. But, um, but it would require, you know, maybe a meeting with Gloria, a meeting with the police folks and
A lot of documentation compiling and beautiful. Thank you very much.
Available. It just needs to be all pulled together.
Well, I'll have you nap then. So I know which way I'm voting.
You might, you might walk up to, you know, Public Works as well.
Yes.
Beautiful. Wow, that's nice. Would you like to do my business when you're done?
More cost. I'd volunteer for that.
Kind of coming back to Jim's question, just in terms of loading the data for the first website to come up. Is that kind of more like the equivalent of doing cut and paste with a Word document rather than literally having to type in forty-nine billion pages of documents?
I don't foresee there being a lot of need for recreating anything. Um, most of what you have is on, is on computer anyway. And things that aren't, we could be, we could scan them into PDF.
Format anyway.
Would you envision seeing the meeting minutes for all the various committees being on the website as well?
And that's something Gloria could do the next day in just a couple of keystrokes, once we get all the bugs worked out.
That would be a nice, in itself, that would be wonderful.
Four hundred dollars, that's going to get us kind of the design low, right? It sounds like.
That is a nice header based on pictures we provide. And we've got a lovely village hall to show off now. So I could provide them with some photos of that, photos around the village. And they basically do like a photo collage type. Nice banner and color scheme.
Yeah, even scanning in the artist conception of the village hall. It's very nicely done.
And I, perhaps we could put something out there initially and then update that picture come spring.
Right. Landscaping this in place.
I was thinking more of once the dumpster is
Come on.
The flagpoles are up.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second to accept the bid from govoffice.com. Uh, it's a spending decision, so I'll ask for a voice vote. So if you're in favor, just indicate so by saying yes. Start over here with Joe.
Yes.
Colleen.
Yes.
Sandra.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes, definitely.
George?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Six oh. Thank you very much, Sandra.
This is going to be nice.
It's going to be fun. It's going to be great. It's been a long time coming.
And do you have a copy of this that I could get signed to fax to them tomorrow?
I only sign things on Fridays.
Okay. I'll record it then.
Make an exception.
But this one, I'll make an exception. Do I have one?
I have one.
Okay.
But I'm questioning now the dates and do you need, do I need?
I'll confirm it in the morning.
Well, we can, we can just cross those. I can cross out an initial with my signature, which will then indicate that they correspond. So we're okay. All right. So I've got that. I've got a few other things to sign instantly. All right. Okay, Finance Committee. Claim to review approval requested. The Finance Committee is recommending approval of the claims are broken into two segments for, for this January meeting. Give me two seconds. All right. The recommendation from the committee was to approve the December non-recurring claims totaling three hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety-four seventy-eight. Unless anybody thinks the Christmas party got out of control. That is not the case. Uh, majority of that represents spending for the village hall. And, uh, the bill for the street project came in.
I just didn't want everybody to think that that whole thing was for the
Was building.
No, it wasn't a building.
Another large chunk is for the street project, which we are withholding thirteen thousand dollars. We keep an escrow on such projects in the event that there is some dispute, which we think that there will be on this case. Not to the amount of thirteen thousand hopefully, but nevertheless we'll be withholding ten percent. So it's only like a hundred and twenty-one they're actually approving on the street project. And then the rest of it is normal expenses. Then for January, uh, this will be my second motion to approve the January non-recurring claims totaling sixty-one thousand oh eighty-eight ninety-one, which is a little higher than our normal monthly, but it's to be expected because a lot of our bills hit us in January, just like we dropped the bomb on residents to say, pay us in January and then pay us again in July. Uh, a lot of our constituents do the same thing. We normally run about thirty thousand. This is roughly double. Uh, but it's to be expected. Our EMS bill comes in. So, uh, those are my two motions. I would appreciate a second to both of those.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, those are two separate motions with the two dollar amounts indicated previously, three hundred thousand nine ninety-four seventy-eight and sixty-one oh eighty-eight ninety-one. Okay. Are there any other, are there any questions or comments or anything? We talked about this in great length in finance. Was there anything there that either needs further clarification or is there anything we need to repeat there just for the sake of the audience? I know we just had lots of questions in terms of mechanics.
Do you want to touch on the retention for the partial, part of the payment?
We'll be bringing that up at a, at our next meeting in Public Works and then we'll bring that information back to the board. So we'll be talking about it then. And this way, you know, we, we will at least want to share the project, which I think is appropriate to do. There's some other incidental things that we should look at when we are doing that.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see. Spending, so we'll do another roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, just indicate by saying yes. Start over on this side. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen? The committee is also recommending approval of the request from the Hudson area senior centers, seniors, senior center for donation in the amount of a thousand dollars, which is a practice which has been operating within the village for quite some time. So the committee is recommending, and I would make a motion to approve the request in the amount of one thousand dollars for the Hudson area senior center.
Second.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Uh, if you're in favor, just say yes. We'll start over here. Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Next item, two thousand and eight Village Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator Agreement. The committee went through it. One member in particular, line by line. We did identify a couple of corrections, all of which are minor and they are more of a, they are more of a grammatical than they are of a substance. I think that is accurate. But nevertheless, they are correct. And they were, they're totally warranted. So I would make a motion to approve the two thousand and eight Village Building Inspector and Zoning Administrator Agreement with one Brian Wirtz, effective one one oh eight. Terminating the agreement terminating twelve thirty-one oh eight. As written with the changes. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it so we can then continue to discuss it.
Yes, go ahead. Comments, questions?
There was a request to change that dollar amount from three to four. And just asking the question, is that something we want to approve before we answer that?
You will.
No, I, only because I had a handout that I think the other board members need to take a look at. Um, the document I handed out, there should be one at your front of you. It says comparisons for building permit fees. And it references items in J, specifically J one I I, J two, J three I I, and J four. The, the document shows the impact of raising that, for each thousand dollar fee, one dollar, or yes, one dollar from three to four dollars. And you can see that for J one I I, that section, uh, it impacts a four thousand dollar job by two dollars. And when you go to J two, you see that the impact on a ten thousand dollar job is eight dollars. And again, this is going from three to four dollars. J three I I, for a ten thousand dollar job, you can see the impact is also eight dollars. But what I, but what is interesting is if someone were building a home, they could build a two hundred thousand dollar home and the impact would be, or the change from three to four dollars for each thousand above two thousand would be a hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which represents a twenty-one percent increase. For a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, that's two hundred and forty-eight dollar difference for, or twenty-two point seven percent. And for a three hundred thousand dollar home, the impact is two hundred and ninety-eight dollars or twenty-four percent. I just want you to be aware of that before you go one way or the other. And if you have any suggestions for the change from three to four dollars.
Good points. Good point. Uh, some other things that are in this agreement, which clarify certain other elements on permit, permitting process is we have attempted to clarify and say, what are the kinds of improvements or alterations that residents don't have to even get a permit for? And that has been expanded rather considerably or at least clarified considerably, although I think it might have been somewhat assumed in the past. But replacement type work, whether it's roofing, siding, windows, doors in the house, doors in the garage, the big doors on a garage, um, replacing countertops, replacing cabinets, those do not require permits. So that clarifies that issue. Uh, it also indicates that, uh, storage sheds of a hundred and twenty square feet, which for the most part is a ten by twelve. As long as it doesn't have concrete, doesn't have electricity, doesn't have plumbing, just a storage shed, you can put a storage shed up to ten by twelve in the backyard. Doesn't have to be ten by twelve, but a hundred and twenty square feet is probably more common. That's because that seems to be a more common size in terms of people being able to buy it. We eliminated one other part of confusion. It used to say projects that were three thousand dollars or less. This is the billing rate or things apply, things don't apply. Then there was projects that cost five thousand dollars or more. Will cost X or these kind of terms and conditions would apply. But there was nothing to explain. What about if it's between three thousand? But there was nothing to explain, what about if it's between three thousand and five thousand? So that's been eliminated, we just use five thousand as the cutoff instead of three. So that should be beneficial as well, for example, a project that costs, it's either going to be under five thousand, this is the calculation rate, if any. If it's five thousand or more, this is it. If it's a new construction, single or double, or a single or two-family, then this is the methodology. And hopefully, the, uh, the language used to hear is a little bit easier for all of us to, uh, to work with on a day and day basis, as well as for people, you know, like myself, and we don't deal with this kind of stuff all the time. So I like that language, it's fairly easy to understand, so. Hopefully, we've accomplished that. Now, the only issue that is of a negative nature would be to the extent that I was going to build a new house, the cost of a building permit would be lower. And I always try to be careful not to confuse dollars with percentages. If it costs me a dollar today and the next year you're going to charge me two dollars, that's a hundred percent increase, but it's still two bucks, okay? So.
Oh, and I, I just wanted the, the board to see the impact of, from the three to four and the hundred and ninety-eight dollar increase, let's use that as an example-
Yeah.
-on a three hundred thousand dollar house. I, I'll use the term as negligible.
You're probably, you're probably right.
I mean, two hundred dollars, from what I saw just this morning, would be one exterior light fixture. Put it in perspective.
Yeah. Well, the other-
What I wanted to say about this, and this would be, this is a perfect kind of a document for us to have out on our website, because of what you and Brian worked out, an example of a house. And how one, if you look at pages seven and eight, talk about the project of building a house and how, uh, the compensation is determined, I think is, is excellent for anyone who is thinking about building a house and, okay, what will my permit fee be? Or my billing fee, billing permit fee? And to be able to calculate it themselves and be able to see, oh, this is how it was arrived at. I think this is excellent, that we've been able to provide a lot more detail on, on the pricing structure for them.
Well, the other thing we've tried to do is we went through all of the fees and some of them did change. And if anything, they changed downward. As I was preparing this so-called red ink changes, one of the things that I thought was necessary was, does the cost of the permit accurately reflect what it is the resident is trying to do? So if I just want to build a deck, and if the permit for that is four hundred dollars, that's nuts, okay? So does the cost, is it representative both of the work that the inspector really has to do? And, you know, for example, on a building, if you're going to put up a deck, typically a building inspector would make two visits. The first one would be for the purpose of inspecting the concrete footings, the second visit would be to make sure that the deck itself has been built to state, uh, uniform dwelling code standards, are the steps at, at the right elevation and spacing, are the, if it's more than a certain amount off the ground, you have to have railings, you know, and are the railings correct? Uh, now, we charge, so now, in, in the contract, it says, what would, what would the building inspector charge us for something which is totally uncovered here and if we had just had to hire him by the hour? The answer is forty-five bucks per hour. So that would say, if on average, he's going to make two visits to just inspect a deck, he should be charging us ninety, okay? We're charging seventy-five for the deck flat fee. Even if he comes back on the second time, finds the steps are out of whack, uh, the railing or the, yeah, the railings are out of whack, uh, he's got to come back a third time. That's life in the big city, you know, he gets paid seventy-five bucks. Same way with other things. So we've tried to make su, I, I think we've tried to make sure that the dollar costs are representative of the number of inspections associated, okay? So I'm, I guess I'm not as concerned as when I first heard that the, the one number in the calculations to create the value for a new home was going from three dollars to four dollars. And what, it seems to me, when I get done running, playing with the numbers here, that's going to be a really big kicker. And it wasn't nearly as big as I thought it was going to be, number one. In the other parts of the agreement, which will then obviously roll over into the, uh, fees, the increase is really de minimis. I mean, it's going from like eight dollars to ten. So it's like a two dollar change, so. Or forty-five dollars to forty-seven dollars, you're going to have a ten dollar permit, so. So I don't have any trouble with the, uh, three to four dollar portion that is being requested by the inspector. And the rest of the changes, hopefully, are just intended to be beneficial to residents, just across the board. So, well, that's my two cents.
It appears like you did a great job of rewriting it. I think you're in good hands. It looks good.
I think it's clear.
And I know we pounded this hard in finance.
You know, these things are, everything is a project, you know, that can be improved upon and will maybe improve upon it later, but this is certainly a step in the right direction, clears up a lot of stuff, makes it, makes it very clear as to what, what you really need.
We've had a lot of ambiguity-
Yep.
-in our, particularly in our billing related, what do you need a permit for, kind of issues, and, you know, is that reasonable? And I know it's kind of flies in the face of what a lot of municipalities are doing, which is in terms of trying to find ways to use the fee structure to raise more, raise more money. And this is actually going backwards.
Cost structure is a lot different than it is in other cities.
Significantly less, significantly less.
Adjacent municipalities were far below what it costs there, so I think we're doing the, the public a service with-
Well, I think it's the right thing to do. I, I don't even look at, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, how do we compare, from everything I can tell, we are significantly below the others. But from a realistic perspective, since residents are paying for this, not something we have to, you know, cash flow out of the village as such, the question becomes one of, is it a fair price to charge the resident for each of the services provided? And I think they are. And if it doesn't meet that test, then we shouldn't be charging them that. Alright, uh, then I will call the questions, so to speak, this is an agreement, does have spending implications, so we'll do another roll call vote. If you're in favor, if you say yes. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
By the way, thank you, George, for doing this, this is very helpful, really helpful. Uh, telephone system maintenance agreement. The Finance Committee recommended approving an annual maintenance agreements with Echelon. Is this an, this is an annual? No, or is that a one-time?
Uh, it's annual, uh, after the first year.
Okay. It's, uh, wait, I'll look at my notes. Uh, we approved an agreement, or we are recommending approval of an agreement with Echelon for their guardian level, uh, maintenance agreement at a cost of three hundred and fifty-eight dollars per year for years two through five, two through five meaning the first five years in which we have our new telephone system in here. Uh, that gives us essentially unlimited access to their training repairs, uh, twenty-four seven. And, uh, general consensus was if we had, if we made one phone call per year requesting their assistance, it would pay for itself. If we elected defer initiating this agreement until, say, a year from now, two years from now, the cost will double, will be slightly more than double. So it certainly makes sense to, as they say, sign up on the front end and pay now rather than later.
Might be helpful for those tuning in, uh, to know what the Echelon, the company that, uh, installed or has already done or is installing our telephone system.
Is in the process of installing.
Yeah.
Yes, they should be completed by tomorrow, training to be, um, given on Friday.
We had quite a meeting with them today, didn't you?
I had one very smooth, yeah. Chief Mark and Gloria and myself and, uh, um, the representative from Echelon was out and I'm really impressed with the cleanliness of his wiring. There's got to be a thousand wires back there.
Really?
But at any rate, hopefully-
Well, I appreciate you taking the day off to, uh, to do that.
But I, I do recommend this, so if you're looking for a second for your motion, I would second that at this point.
Well, the motion on the floor, made by myself, seconded by Jim, to approve the telephone system maintenance agreements with, maintenance agreement with Echelon in the amount of three fifty-eight per year for years two through five, uh, which would be two thousand nine through two thousand thirteen.
Sounds right.
So, uh, we'll do a roll call vote again. Sorry, it was Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Unless there be any questions about this agreement. You know, there's a rather long schedule, there's two schedules, uh, you know, about five pages of fine print that goes along with what you just voted on. We got it right here.
Absolutely. I think that, uh, by having this guardian plan, it should, uh, eliminate any of the fine print that we would have to be reading through to be saving the seven dollars per month, so, uh, I hope that this is a good one.
Uh, the next one is somewhat related, it's, it's again a phone system issue. Jim Thomas had also done research on this subject, just like he had done research on the telephone system maintenance agreement, as well as on the whole telephone system completely. So I'm just sitting here really stealing Jim's thunder, but he's done all the work here. Uh, what the Finance Committee is recommending is that the, uh, sign the agreement to purchase what is really a block of calls, in this case, twenty thousand phone calls from a company called XM Voice. Uh, the purpose of even having this agreement, and that would cost us approximately thirty-one dollars every time we pull the trigger and send out a voice, voicemail message to the residents. So if we wanted to inform residents that there had been a child abduction, uh, it would cost us thirty-one dollars, which we all agreed is nothing, we'd have to pay triple that, or a hundred times that, if it would be helpful. If we had a natural, if we had a gas line leak, we needed to get the word out, okay? The messages can also be delivered, from the time we call in till the time the messages are done, it could be effected in like fifteen minutes, okay? To the extent we wanted to eventually call residents and say, guess what, after ten thousand years, the website has been updated, okay? So when you get a chance, go take a look. Costs thirty-one dollars. At forty-one cents a stamp, I'm not sure what it would cost to send out fifteen hundred postcards, but it's more than thirty-one bucks, I know that, without even doing math, okay? Plus, it's the ability to communicate in a way that we're all reasonably accustomed to, which is, you get voicemails. And it's instantaneous, it allows the staff to be able to, uh, let residents know about things very quickly and very easily. So, this to me is a real no-brainer. And what we do is we pay thirty-one dollars a month, that gives us, uh, twenty thousand calls. And every time, right now, we have eleven hundred village resident, a little more than eleven hundred phone numbers already plugged in. If somebody wants to let us know in the future, I don't want to be on that list, we can take you off. If you're not on there and you want to be, call us, let us know, we can add you, so.
Does, maybe you said this and I'd forgotten, does this also take into account commercial establishments?
It does.
I'm assuming it's just, you give me a phone number, it'll call it. Yeah, okay.
Another piece that the residents need to know about this, you're limited to twenty-five seconds. So, when the phone rings, I would hope that it wouldn't say private call on it, because some of these-
Or unknown caller.
Or unknown caller. I would hope very much that we would be able to have it come up as an identifier, Hudson Village, or Village, somehow coded, so that when I see that phone ringing and I look at that little caller ID, it's going to tell me that this is a call I want to pay attention to.
Unfortunately, no, it will not. But fortunately, it will not be blocked access, it will be a phone number. But you know it will not say North Hudson, that's not an option. Just real briefly, just to clarify the one issue, what we're voting on here is the, um, purchase of twenty thousand phone calls, which at eleven hundred dollars, at, or eleven hundred residents or phone, phones every time we pull the trigger, will be approximately seventeen uses of the system. We will bank these, uh, the seven, or the twenty thousand bank calls will cost, uh, I think we're asking for what, seven hundred dollar approval or six hundred? There's supposed to be five hundred and eighty dollars. XM Voice will bank those and it will, um, we will just use these up until it gets down to a couple thousand and we'll buy another twenty thousand.
Do the banked calls ever expire? Do they use them up in a certain time period?
No, they don't, to the best of my knowledge, yeah. And there's no-
That's a good question, I forgot to ask that in our Finance Committee meeting, when we were plowing through the details of this. That's an even better deal, because, yeah.
And there's no monthly fees?
We'll probably use it more going forward. We probably won't use it much at all in January and February, just because we've got so much, you know, just physical change going on here in the Village Hall. But if we don't use them all up this year, it just carries over until we have twenty thousand calls left.
The nice thing about this is that I have completely worked through all the bugs of the system at home, I've got it set up, we've got a user ID and password, um, I have sent blocks of test messages and it works well. And I've got all of the village residents' phone numbers, uh, in the system, ready to go. I will create a couple of messages that I would probably recommend using one over whatever as a introduction to the residents as to how the system will work, how it will benefit them with keeping them abreast of things that they will find helpful being a resident of the village. And, uh, hopefully, in doing so, make Gloria and the administrators' lives a lot easier because it's just so easy to do. So, I think, uh, like you said earlier, this is another no-brainer.
Well, it really is, because I know there's been, you know, over the last several years, any number of times when I've said, wouldn't it be nice to be able to just send out a postcard to residents? But by the time you drop the postcard, print the postcard, put the posters on it, uh, you're probably up to, throwing in your labor, you're, you're up to at least a dollar per, alright? So it's going to cost you, you know, over like twelve hundred and sixty bucks to send out a postcard. We can do it for thirty-one dollars faster, you know, with heck of a lot less direct and indirect labor associated with it.
Just another use that Jim had mentioned before too, was like for the leaf pickup and the tree pickup, um, because I had a resident ask me, when is the leaf pickup? Well, it was two weeks ago. So if it's-
Yep, exactly.
They get that quick message because they don't always pay attention when they see it in the, the flyers around it and-
Or you see it and you forget about it.
If it says, hey, it's, you know, it's coming up in two days, you're going to remember it more hearing it.
A lot of people participate in that too, so.
They do. Yeah, this, this family was a little upset that they missed it.
Yeah.
They didn't blame us for it.
And we've got the Christmas tree pickup coming.
Yeah, so things like that too.
You might want to, just for the record.
Yeah, just as a reminder, if you have, if you have a cri, or a Christmas tree that you want to dispose of, if you put it out on the curb between now and January fifteenth, it'll get picked up by Waste Management, there'll be no charge. If you put it out after January fifteenth, there'll be some nominal charge to pick it up, I'm not sure what the dollar amount is, but why pay anything when you can get it picked up for free?
Thanks for reminding us of that.
Okay.
Now, those are the real trees that we're putting out, artificial trees as well.
I usually save mine, that's kind of why I bought it, but.
You know, Jim, when you first started researching this and recommending it, I wasn't convinced that we really needed this service, but with this price, I'm, I'm blown away. This is fantastic. And with the, the emergency uses, it's, it's a service we need to have at the ready.
Yeah. Something coming up, we have, you know, elections coming up in February, we have elections coming up in April this year. I don't know if we have any elections, we have elections in the fall this year?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You might have heard.
Does that have something to do with Iowa?
Yeah.
I think I've heard of that. You kind of forget what's going on. What time, time is it anyway? It's time to go. Well, yeah, I think I'm with, with Sandra on this. Initially, I didn't quite fully appreciate the magnitude of this puppy, but it's, it's just outstanding. And Jim, I thank you for finding us and for putting all three of these things together. It's, it's not only a great service, but significantly lower cost than we had expected and budgeted as well for the phone system.
And less work.
And less work.
Nice coming up with things that are, require no effort.
I've had a lot of requests, and I was really excited to be able to tell people when they come in that we're working on this and it's a possibility, so.
On this one?
Yeah.
All right, so I'd make a motion to purchase the twenty thousand-
I think we maybe already did, and I seconded it, or we were just doing the discussion part, and we just need a vote.
You and I did the telephone system.
Oh, yes, you're right.
I didn't make a motion.
I apologize. Yes, you're absolutely right.
Note here is who makes the motions and who seconded, just in the interest of time I'm dragging on here. I would entertain a second to accepting the voice messaging system purchase of twenty thousand minutes at a cost not to exceed six hundred bucks total.
I would second that with twenty thousand calls, yes.
Did I say minutes? Okay. Twenty thousand calls. All right, somebody give me a second. You know what I mean. All right, well, we'll circle the table again. Start over here. Joe, Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George? All right, done. Okay. All right, start making calls. Call somebody.
Are you awake?
All right, Public Works.
We, we did not meet in December, so I have no update.
Okay. Public Safety.
Well, Public Safety has a few things to share with you, as you could well-
Oh, just a second. Before we leave Public Works.
Yes.
Future usage of vacant village lots, discussion of possible action. We always have that issue on the top. We've always had that issue on the agenda until we finally resolve it, okay? So that's why it's there. It's not per se, and I've asked the other trustees as well, to try and solicit ideas as how should we, what should we best deal with that? Should we make it small parking, some of our green space, park, pave the whole thing, whatever we want to do with it. So I would entertain a motion to table this issue since it was on for action. So I would make a motion to table item seven B. It's the next month's meeting.
Sure, I'll second it.
All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, approved. Okay.
Now let me off the hook.
Off the hook. Public Safety.
You have in front of you the Public Safety meeting minutes of December thirteenth, and I'd like to draw your attention to the back page or the second page. This is a topic which you will see, we will be updating this periodically. It's called Department Staffing. And the chief did quite a bit of work to come up with that paragraph. In the future, what I'd like to do is to have this in a table form so that you can see the actual activity. And I guess if you wanted, I'll pick the word justification for increased staffing in a police department, specifically for a detective. But as you see, they're also for an officer. There's so much work that needs to be done, and quite a bit of it is going undone. But this will give you some just statistical information on where we are in our analysis of the needs. I would anticipate, however, that as we complete the, the building project here, that the chief will have a little bit more time to devote to police work because he has been doing a lot of extra work, from my perspective, on the building. And we very much appreciate that. And I'll come back and give you a little bit more of a report on the, on the addition in just a moment. Also, in this section, you'll see the chief's report. And I just want to draw a couple things to your attention. The squad car, you may remember that this was, and there was a little bit of confusion on this, this is the one that we sold, not the one we were buying. And you may recall several months ago, someone made the bid, or made a bid for purchase of the car, then rescinded it. And you may notice there that on Tuesday, November thirteenth, we-
Were you charging a cancellation fee?
No, unfortunately. We did sell the car and transferred the title and all that on November thirteenth. The next one, the eligibility list, I find that is interesting. You also approved some months ago, the chief being able to build a list of candidates who, for the possible need. And what it would do would save us about four months in the process of replacing an officer who, who would have left. And I'll just add to this, there were fifty-nine submittals, and both the Police Commission and the, and the chief narrowed it down to one. The next, under new business, you'll see an item there on thermal imagers. And I'd like to read for the record the first bullet. "The training I," and that would be Chief Richard, "the training I attended provided me with an advanced certification and allows me to provide expert testimony on the use of a thermal imager in law enforcement investigations. I am also eligible to be an instructor for the Law Enforcement Thermographers Association at various training sites across the country." We are indeed very fortunate to have someone of Mark Richard's expertise and initiative to get that quite valuable resource.
George, just briefly, what is thermal imaging?
It is not, as you may have seen watching-
CSI.
CSI and other police shows, it does not see through walls. It does not see through glass. In fact, if you aim it at the glass, you'll get your own image back. Did I get that right?
Line of sight?
Well, what it's used for is out in an open field, if you're trying to find somebody. And just the, the thermal changes.
It's a body heat running.
It's a body heat.
Mark had showed us that once at a meeting a few months ago where he shined it on me, picking up my, the heat from my body, and then my glasses were black because there's no heat coming through there. So it does pick up just thermal heat. It was kind of neat.
Set a couple hundred or two hundred feet away even?
Oh, I don't know the specs on it, but, yeah.
And he gave another example where there was a, a juvenile down, kind of in the railroad yard tract area, who had been smoking a cigarette and flicked the ash and thinking he was going to get caught for smoking. And they went down there and they were able to find where the person was. And it's not a, you know, a heavy, serious crime, but it does show how well that works because they, they were able to come up onto this person without any advance warning since they had their lights off and-
If I remember correctly, Mark even found the butt.
Yeah, he found the cigarette butt.
Me? I don't have anything. Oh, yes you do, and here it is. How did you find that?
Well, if my imagination goes that one, that could be beneficial.
It could be. But no, it doesn't see through the walls.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much for explanation.
Now, Kathy, you were there, too. You remember anything else that, I'm trying to remember how the details.
I think mainly just about the, the glass that, you know, instead you, it bounces, it'll bounce back and-
And if I, if memory serves me correctly, that, those thermal imagers that we have are all paid for out of grant money. So I, so we are not expending-
How many do we have? How many do we have, too?
I think it's two.
And they were, one of them was recently upgraded.
Yeah. Are they put in the patrol cars as a matter of policy or principle or, you know?
Where, I know the chief has one. I'm not sure where the other one is because there are only two.
Is it portable? Can it go from car to car to car?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's worn. You wear it like a pistol.
Oh, okay. So we're probably just handing it off as I come on duty.
Yeah.
You give me yours. Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda here is the Village Hall Edition Remodel Plan Update. Just a couple things to report to you. We're working and have been working with Rob Cole from BRG, that's Builders Resource Group. And they will be installing the projector, the monitor, and wiring for the next phase. Once, once that phase is done, and we've got this side and we start to rebuild it, we're going to need a new monitor, and we're going to have an overhead projector. And so we're working with Rob. We had a situation that Rob came to our rescue, and it had to do with the phones and hooking them up because we needed the elevator, or, excuse me, I want to correct that. That's a lift, it's not an elevator. And for the past inspection last Thursday, we had to have an operating phone. And it was a rush job. And I called, I was trying to find somebody who'd be able to do it for us very quickly. In between phone calls, I get a call from Rob. "Rob, while I got you on here." He said, "Sure, I'll be able to, I'll be glad to help you. When do you need me?" I says, "When are you available?" "I can come out this afternoon." And so we are very pleased with working with BRG. And you approved, oh, we approved that in the Building Management Committee, if I remember correctly, for them to do that, the job. So we're fine with that. Let's see, today's Wednesday. Go back to Monday. I stopped by the village here on Monday, and what did I see? There's Gloria and Jennifer, and they're moving. They're moving out of their digs here into the new digs. This is great. Wait a minute. I thought you weren't supposed to be able to do this till today and tomorrow and Friday. Well, they got the, well, okay, we can move in. So I think the staff is pretty excited about moving in. I've, I've talked to a couple of folks from downstairs, and they were, they were moving today, moving their stuff upstairs. And I got comments like, "It smells so much better up here." It's really pretty neat.
Don't like the sweet fragrance of mold?
No.
You can't make a difference.
I gotta tell you, okay, you talk about mold, that's one thing. So they moved this desk away from the wall down in the, in the, where Denise and Becky were. And I was there when they moved this over. And the shriek that I got out of Becky, she looked down, and there is a pile behind this desk as they moved that they found, a pile of corn candy and nuts and all kinds of other things. Now, none of them eat corn candy. It's been there for a long time. And it has been too nice a shaped pile for it to have fallen off a desk. I'll leave it to your imagination. On a, on another note, we went through, we had a, what's called the Architect's Walk Through, and that was last Thursday. Went through it with some members of the Building Management Committee and with the architect, Chad from Derek, Chad Darke from Derek Construction, Mike Mickliff from Derek Construction, Trent Dunker from Elliott Architects, and we went all through. And it was quite amusing to me. There's, there's Mike. He's got this pad of yellow, of blue Post-it notes, tearing them in half and putting them all over the walls. Needs to be fixed. This needs to be fixed. This needs to be fixed. We got into the restrooms, and we found that the lighting was inadequate. And so that's already been fixed.
Since Thursday. Or do you know if they fixed that? Was it Monday?
Okay, we're not even sure when, but it was since Thursday. And so there was a lot of little things that are being done. There were things that I didn't, that I spotted, but there were even more things I didn't spot that I was glad Trent was there because he was looking at things, again, from a different set of eyes. We thought the painting was done except for the repairs. And yet, what Trent found, if you'd been here today, you would have seen they were painting the accent colors on a couple of the walls. And so if you go over to where our mailboxes are, each going to get a real nice mailbox above the cabinet, you'll notice that wall is not yellow as it is, as most of the walls are. That's a gray wall. And out here, there's a, I don't know what color that is, salmon, dark salmon color. Again, they're called accent colors, and it's just to add a little bit of, I don't know, make it a little nicer. So we are moving along with that. On Monday, we're expecting AirTech to show up and begin the asbestos abatement of this room, the rooms on the other side of the wall, and downstairs. And that's why there is the, that's why we are hastening to get these, these areas cleaned out so that they can come in and do what they need to do. I think that's all I need to say about that.
So, assuming things continue to be on schedule as they have been, probably this physical area will be completed by, for sure, second week in February?
We're hoping that we can have our meeting next month in here.
February board meeting.
Yeah. But, did I hear a groan from them? Uh, February fifth? What is?
No, I just said in terms of, would it be finished by February fourteenth?
February fourteenth.
I just, just, just an arbitrary.
You mean for the Public Safety meeting?
Uh, no, I was, I don't think it minds at all.
Because that's a Thursday. When is, when's the primary?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth? I have no doubt that this room will be ready for the nineteenth for the election. But watch your emails for where we'll, I'm not, I can't guarantee or promise that this will be ready by February fifth. But they're shooting for it.
And, and, okay, and in the event we can't meet on the fifth, just because we're still under such, and we don't really have a conference room across the way. Because this is the second conference room, or the third conference room, if you want to call it that. We'll just defer the meeting, but right now, we'll continue to target for February four.
That's actually, well, that would probably be the easiest thing to do.
February fifth, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And just because it's a public meeting, Public Safety meeting will not, will be meeting a week from Thursday. We, but we will be meeting in the break room of the new facility. One of these three tables will go into that room temporarily.
As long as George has, has mentioned that, if you look at all of the rest of January, in terms of Public Safety, Public Welfare, et cetera, you want to, you may want to keep a close eye on whether or not is the Village Hall even available. This building, or I mean, this room may not be available because of construction. If you can handle it, I mean, you can always move in one of the, to the break room area. That's kind of empty. And then what is that office area right across from you? Right now, it just had a chair in there, didn't it? Ah, okay, never mind.
The break room would-
I was going to sell it, but that's all right.
The break room, I would just say, well, if you have a meeting planned for January seventh through the seventh, yeah, I'd say the month of January, you can't use, you won't be in this room.
So either schedule for that smaller-
The break room.
It'll be up to you whether to decide to move the meeting back or to have it, but you could have it in the break room. The only one that's going to be so large that'll be a problem would be Plan Commission, and I believe Donna's talked to the school.
Are you, are you going to tell them I was like, you know, with that? I wouldn't tell them I was staying that period of time, okay.
Do you have room enough park board in there?
Well, we haven't met, so we'll, we'll meet in the-
The answer to that, Colleen, is can you fit all your people around this table?
Cozy.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, that's what I'm using is the, as the bench, the barometer, as it were. Do you fit her on this table?
This table?
Well, one of these tables.
One table.
Yeah.
Draw on one table.
I'm not sure. If there's enough room, they might be able to put two back to back in there. And, you know, just temporarily.
If you don't have, I don't know what your schedule is or what you have on the plate, maybe it's something that can-
You can wait?
Will there be tables and chairs in there?
Yeah, I think it's probably till February.
Will we have a table and chairs in there?
I'm saying, we are moving one of these tables. And then we'll probably take those, some of these chairs.
Okay, fine.
No, we're not going to make you stand. Let me just check something here. The rest, that, in my notes, what I had here was just what was on the punch list, and that one, I've already talked- that one, I've already talked about that. I'd just say that the, uh, this is just something that the chief had commented on, he's been working with audiovisual, AVP, audiovisual planners, audio video planners, excuse me, and he said, "These guys have been a real joy to work with." And they were the ones who did, uh, all the work with, um, for our security cameras and security systems. So, just accolades when they're, you know, when they're earned, and that one was. If you walk, uh, you wanna walk through there, you'll notice that it, that we have moved into the 21st century, and that, uh, there is considerable surveillance now around this facility, as there needs to be. And that's just the way, that's the society we're in now. We need to have that kinda surveillance, and I want the community to know that our staff feels better about it, and they should feel better about it, too. So, that's where we are.
Super. Again, my, my compliments to that of the whole board, to yourself and the Building Management Committee. Great job keeping this thing on task, I know it has not been easy, to say the least.
Challenges in a way.
All right, public welfare.
Uh, we did not meet, uh, we will be, uh, meeting this month, and, um, because we're running so far over, I don't really think there's that much to go over that I need to at this point. We'll bring whatever we come up with to the board, but, uh, I will not be present for the February Board Meeting, so, um, do I appoint somebody to bring whatever we talk about? I'll, I'll talk to you later.
And then, on the same notice, Colleen, in the state of Chicago, we wouldn't have a January meeting, will you be having a public work, or public welfare meeting, but maybe in the break room?
I'm thinking that, that would be the way to go about it, yeah.
For us.
Sure. It would be cozy.
The usual suspects.
Yeah, the usual suspects, exactly. Exactly, so, uh, with, uh, that, um, uh, I have nothing more.
Sure. Well, and thank you again for your work again on the phones.
You're very welcome.
Park Board.
Well, I'll keep it brief, too, we didn't meet in December, um, and we did complete our five-year plan, presented it to the Plan Commission, as Mike had said, um, we made the corrections that were mostly, that were typos. I think we had just looked at it too many times, and we didn't notice, uh, periods missing or some of the numbers. So, that has been fixed. We are still kind of waiting for the backwarding for the ordinance for the park dedication fees, where you used to be able to ask for money instead of land. That ordinance has been changed, um, and Phil's been looking on that, and we may end up just saying, "See Village Ordinance, Such and Such," and they can look it up there. The only other thing is, it's not content-wise, is we wanna get a picture of LA Park for that cover. Susan had just gotten a picture, just to kinda give an idea of where the picture would be, but I don't think that affects whether or not it can be approved or not. We've tried to come up with some more specific goals and plans and timelines, or some ideas of what we want to accomplish and how, and that, realizing that money will be a factor, and we wanna work on getting, finding out how to get grants to do some of the things that we wanna do. So, that's basically it, so, I would move that the Board adopt the Village of North Hudson Ultra Recreation Park Plan for 2008 to 2013.
I'll second. Can I ask some questions?
Yes.
No, they won't be hard. Page five, um, the second, third, the third goal, develop a five-year capital improvement schedule, uh, that addresses short, medium, and long-term priorities identified in this plan. Is that, isn't that Table Two on page 18? Or do you anticipate developing something more detailed than that?
Um, we wanna come up with, uh, funding for the place.
I was impressed by the, uh, the research that your team obviously did to come up with, you know, where money is available, and I, I'd love to make a couple of offers when we, as I, I did go through this, 'cause I, I get interested in the parks. Didn't realize we'd had so many parks, even little tiny parks that are about this wide. I just, that was, that was most interesting, that there's a, some really small and narrow parks. Perhaps we can help you with, uh, I noticed on page 10, Table One, Existing Parks and Recreational Facilities, the Pepperfest Park, we needed to do some, had some survey work done when we were looking through the Plan Commission, and, uh, so, we've got the, that data for you if, if you need that.
That'd be great.
And then, over on the right side of that, under the, that same row, in that column, it says, uh, Develop Veterans Memorial. And just for the public's sake, uh, so that the folks out there know that that wall is up there, it's yours. We hope that between you and, uh, VFW, we can get some funding for it, but, that's, but I just, but that's, yep, but that, that wall is out there, it's yours, and we've got the three pole, flag poles up.
Thank you, 'cause I think that it's a nice addition to having the Veterans Memorial here at the Village Hall rather than Webster Park, where they had originally planned on doing it. It makes much more sense to have it down here with the, I think it's a nice design, and I think, um, the VFW and the other service organizations will be pleased with it, too, and we'll be working on how to get, like, blocks if they want people's names, or, that's all still kind of in the planning phase, but that's one of the things that we'll be working on in 2008.
On the next page, top-left corner, Riverside Drive Access, if, if you would, I tried to find it, could, in that, could you just have across the street from house number or property number? I know it's one of those really little pieces.
It is.
What, the second smallest park we got? Down at the bottom, North Hudson Elementary School, um, just, again, I'm asking the question, is there, as I read that, I go, I don't know, that's, that's school district property. How does that fit in with Park Board, school district property?
Well, we're just trying to see if there's use, ways to use it, you know, for the village to use it, too, since that's really is kind of an underutilized area. You know, the softball fields, those get used, and the playground gets used, so, we just kind of include that since it's within the village, and if there's things down the line that we can work on with the school district for programs or things like that, just to try to make use of the facilities.
Maintenance, though, is done by the school district?
Yeah. Well, it's more kind of how we can use it, and.
Sure.
Um, next, page 12, there's a, item three, I thought it was interesting. We're talking about the wildlife habitat. Between you and Sandra and myself living on Helen Street, um, we live in a wildlife habitat, don't we? We need a space for those darn dear, think they live there.
Yeah.
The only thing is, they don't pay the taxes.
George, I had one on my deck.
I had.
Up on my deck.
Oh, yeah, I had one on my front porch, in my wife's hanging basket.
I saw that. Get off my deck!
And there's a, there's a, a whole trail, I, I saw a beautiful big.
Oh, yeah.
Sitting on your front lawn one day.
I've seen him a lot this year.
Have you? Handsome devil, isn't he?
Yeah. Well, it's more kind of that, we don't, we don't wanna use up all of the, we'd like to keep some green space, but if we is, if that's covered.
Number six, strict enforcement of the Village Tree Ordinance and et cetera. What I wondered as I read that, would this pertain to only parklands, or would this be extended more into even residential? Where we're looking at the, I didn't even know we had a Village Tree Ordinance.
I think this one might've been from the old plan and put in, but I would think that it should extend to the other areas as well.
Because down at number eight, we talk about the doggy park, and, uh, what occurred to me is I looked at the dog park, and then 11, it's, uh, dog parks should be considered, and I underlined the word considered, I'm glad you're just gonna consider it. My concept, and this is just me now, I may be wrong in this, but my whole, I, what I understood about dog parks, they were, they were built in cities, where people lived in apartments and high-rise condos and didn't have a place for their dogs to run. Whereas, uh, the vast majority of the residents of this village, they have their own backyards where their dogs can run, their front yards, and, and, but what it did prompt me to think about was putting up more of those doggy, doggy doodoo bags, or whatever they call them.
That's in the plan, too.
And it'd be nice to have them not just in the parks, but maybe throughout the village, so that I could clean up my neighbors' dogs. In number seven, I liked ramps in place of steps, part of the ADA compliance, but then I wondered if that conflicted with the item on page 15, the bullet under Ferry Landing Park that says, "Continue to study and explore a stairway from the beach to the bathhouse." You're gonna need a ramp.
Yeah.
That'd be a long ramp, but. And now, to where I wanted to, uh, offer, um, something. Oh, before I do that, though, yeah, I'll come back. The railroad bridge, um, this board, uh, several years ago, did quite a bit of extensive investigation regarding purchasing that property from the railroad. And so, when you get real serious about that, we do have this in our records, and I do have a file on this, I'll be able to provide you with. I'll also be able to provide you with some photographs that I took of a bridge, an old railroad bridge that went across the Rock River. Uh, and that whole, it's a, it was a railroad bridge that, where they have, that the pilings are still down there, but they supplemented that, they cut off all of, all the rotten stuff, they put in new timber, and they built this beautiful walkway. And it was all done with, and then we go to the back where the funds are available, and I did some investigating when I was down there, because I knew we had a similar situation. And I know that I saw something in here about a list of available resources, it's on page 19, Rails to Trails, and I'm pretty sure that some of the funding for that bridge came out of that funding. So, uh, I took, I took about a half a dozen pictures of it, might, might, um, be helpful. And I'll, going back to Webster Park on page 16, continue to explore reuse slash tree removal. Reuse, uh, is that, page 16 down near the bottom, Webster Park? Reuse?
Removal.
Removal?
Yeah.
But thank you for this work, this is in, uh.
I think just cross out that reuse, I didn't actually know if that was there, so just.
Oh, okay.
Re-removal. Guess I looked at it too much.
Yeah, I.
So, you don't see it all.
Definitely understand. Thank you, Colleen, Mrs. Z.
Well, for the record, I'd like to also state that Susan Overston, um, one of the Park Board members, was very instrumental in putting this together, and because she's had experience with working with the DNR and grants through her regular job, so it was very helpful to have her as a point person to kind of get us started on doing this, 'cause you're faced with this, and you're kind of going, I don't know how to execute a plan, and, and so, we, you know, we spent quite a, quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to make it a hookable plan, instead of just something that is done because the state requires it.
Colin, there's a couple of points in here where you refer to, uh, exploring historic preservation, and so, we have a somewhat inactive historic preservation committee that.
I think because.
You'd be glad to have something to do with it.
I think that was because it was in the previous plan, and we thought that, um, you know, if it's possible, that someone can then figure out the historic preservations that would be worth considering what to do.
Chair, the chairman's Roger Davis, a former trustee, and he has been the chairman for a while.
So, if you guys come up with things, or comes up with things, um, kinda look together on, as well.
I was very impressed with this when I read through it, it's a very comprehensive plan, and really looked good, and it would just be nice if that property that's down where the railroad bridge was donated to us, or it's, you know, so, because I know it's gonna cost a fortune.
Yeah.
To, uh, to turn into anything.
Was that an offer I heard me on?
But, uh, the one question, and only one, because it is, uh, relatively close proximity, is the Riverside Drive Access, and, um, I know what you had brought up, it's a hard one to find, but more, more importantly, I think, is the, um, issue that I believe that there is an easement on either side of the road, but the residents down there, uh, their front yards are their only yards, are so choked down that everybody maintains that, we were having this talk of boulevards earlier, who actually owns them, who is actually responsible for them, and with the fact that some of the depths of the front yards are, you know, are less than 70 feet, everybody maintains that, and with the parking limitations that are there, I would just ask that you would be conscientious in, you know, advertising the use of that, because it's such a narrow spot in the road that, um, I think it's better if people want to walk down there and sit down at a picnic table, whatever, that's great, but if the issue ever got to a point where there was two or three or four cars, it would start to become a, a little bit of a nuisance for residents, but.
Wouldn't even be a place to park down there, because Riverside Drive is so narrow.
Yeah, so, you, you would run into a situation with cars passing there, because there's a lift station right there.
It's an interesting point that Jim is raising.
Yeah.
There are certainly pieces of property located within our corporate limits that certainly would not fit, they're owned by the village, and they clearly would never constitute, uh, places where you would build something, build a house. So, it could never be a residential property. Now, because it is owned by the village, have we, have we at some point in time officially declared them to be parks, rather, rather than simply village-owned properties?
This is the list of parks I was given, so, until I can go by.
Yeah, and it may well, I mean, I'm just kinda curious as to whether or not we have, because I know that where the old lift station used to be, it took Seventh Street, right, straight down.
Yeah.
That's where the old lift station used to be. Very, and that, that is, I'm not sure what the width of that is, but it might be like 40 feet, 50? Oh, it can't be that big.
I don't think it's that big.
Isn't it as wide as Seventh Street?
No, I was trying to say, no. It's, it's, it was at the time smaller than the street, 'cause you got the, the one yard coming over this way, and you got the other yard coming down this way.
Probably no more than 25 acres wide.
It's 0.05 acre.
Let's just see, what's as wide as this building?
0.05 acres.
0.05? That's a half an acre?
Point, no. Point 0.5.
That's one twentieth of an acre.
Yeah. Okay, I thought you said, oh, I got, a little late, and I'm calculating, 0.5. I question whether or not that should be defined as a park, rather than just a conservancy of the district. Now, I, I echo the same thing you're, what I was saying here, which is, this is probably the most detailed, uh, report and update as to, you know, where are the parks, how big are they, what's in them, what might we want in them, and, uh, I was impressed with just the amount of detail that had been collected and identified, but that was kind of the one issue that, uh, came up, 'cause I know the issues come up before in, in Plan Commission, in terms of, you know, should we be doing more with certain other of these really small properties? When they were originally either deeded to the village, or we acquired them, or whatever method we used to acquire them, to call it a park implies that it can, that it could handle public access on an almost normal basis, like, uh, Pepperfest Park here, uh, and they can't. They have no parking accommodations, um, they have no laboratory facility, anything even approaching it, and they're, and literally more than 10 people would crowd them, crowd the lot, okay? So, my question is to, you know, how do we do that? And do we need to take a look at that? But other than that, uh, the only other question I had was the timeframe. This would imply theoretically that we're gonna do an awful lot in five years. Normally, we try to do our strategic planning in the village on a 20-year cycle. Is there any reason for a five-year plan?
Because the last one was a five-year plan, and that's what we thought we had to do.
Well, and I can, and I can understand that.
I think that was.
Okay, and that's fine, that's legitimate, of course, that's very understandable. The only reason I raised the question is because as I was looking at this, and we just came off the budget process. off the budget process as well, there were a couple of issues that came up there and I was gonna just kind of address it a little bit in the president's comments later on. But it had to do with if we want to start getting a little bit more strategic in what we do. If I was on, and if I was in your shoes, I would have done the same thing. Well, the last one's five years, let's do five years. You take a look at where we're at now and what we'd like to. If you condense that into a five-year period, you might end up with, with a number or set of objectives that you just can't accomplish. When we're doing municipal work, you really do look at much longer time frames. Because it, because you don't have the ability, like in the private sector, it's like, I'm maybe they're gonna raise prices or do whatever, we've got levy limits, so we've got to, we need to think in terms of longer periods of time. Especially when you've got such a, you know, a well-done, comprehensive document I'll give you out here. Other than that, I thought it was spread.
I just wanted to make one clarification also in that there is two on Riverside Drive that both share the same concerns, I guess. The one is Riverside Drive access and the other being that Seventh and Riverside Landing. And I think what you echoed earlier is probably the case that North Hudson probably bought that piece of property, it's where the lift station is, and I believe right across.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yes, no, we still have lift station down. This is one down a little further, not, not where that drainage thing is. But that's again, one of those things that maybe at some point we want to look into, you know, what you'd recommend, is it worth maintaining a point oh five and a point two acre park or just accepting the fact they're village land and let it go with that and focus our efforts on.
Well, certainly in terms of creating something of value to the residents, which is, you know, what we're doing here, whether it's parks or whether it's public welfare or wherever. There's nothing you can do with a point oh, point zero five size lot, okay? So you can't turn it into a park even if you wanted to, because it's just too small. Secondly, if you tried to ma, tried to maximize its use, which is what you hopefully would do, where are you gonna park cars? Because there's no parking allowed or there's such limited parking in that area. So I mean, I'm just raising the question of just because it has the village of North Hudson listed as the owner on the county deed, that by definition makes it a park?
Could you?
I don't think it does.
But who would maintain it? Like say that it became over.
Oh, we, oh, we do, we own it.
And so maybe that's where they take the ownership for that maintenance is, may, maybe that's why that was included originally in there is because, other words, who else would?
I will, I'll answer it. The people who live there, the people who live adjacent to that property maintain it.
But are they responsibly responsible for it technically?
They completely know. And so therein, there's another, something else you could do, you could deed it over to the people who wants it. Or split it and deed it if that land is such that it could be done because it's not in a right of way. So what you'd need to do is have, like you say, keeping the lawyers busy. You take a look at this piece of property and say, no, it's not land that could be deeded over to anybody. What do you do with it? And in nine times out of, probably ninety-five out of a hundred, what happens is we, it's one of these things out of sight, out of mind. And the people who live there maintain it because they don't want to have an eyesore.
Well, but we've had issues with, and I think one of them on Riverside where there was some controversy and I believe it was Jane Shufflin had to actually go find and click on deed for that to resolve that. And, and we didn't have the information that was supporting that it was ours, and so this kind of helps keep that record going.
It does. And I think also what, what has been happening is people come by with their station wagons and their kayaks on top looking for a park. And they're thinking, well, it's here, I'm just gonna park here. And then pretty soon there's two, three, four of them, and then the residents say, hey, we can't get by on the road because it's too narrow. And they say, well, there's a park here. And so I think some type of initiative has to be taken.
There's a practical, I mean, we have the same thing, you can expand that to Ferry Landing. Ferry Landing Park, I mean, I remember when that was cleared back in the early fifties. All the residents got together one Saturday and we literally went through that park with chainsaws and hauled all of the, the trees and the timber out of there and turned it into what is the park. Now, that road that went down, it was never intended to be a park road. It was designed to be the access to the natural gas line that's running down below there. We now use it as a free landing. So we've got some properties that originally the village acquired or was given access to, in this case, I think by the DNR and by, at that time, NSP, which was now so good, we're gonna make the top part a park, which, which is fine, it makes it a good park. And I'm not sure how we ever got a hold of Brown's Beach, okay? It may well have been, somebody said, but this, this piece of land can never be developed, I'm gonna donate it to the village. And we turned it into a walkway. I think the last time we, someone would take a look at, what would it cost to replace the steps to walk down to Brown's Beach, it was like a hundred thousand dollars. So we probably won't add that to the miscellaneous budget for this year, okay? So we've got some properties that we've clearly acquired over time. I think you've got some very good ideas. I don't know what to do with some of those properties very candidly, because the cost to develop Ferry Landing, do you want to pave that puppy? That's a very steep road, which means it's gonna have to have some very heavy DNR approvals because you're gonna create a very strong flow in the sinkside, which we're not gonna get by with without some kind of filtration capturing that puppy. I know it isn't exactly the best road to drive on, since going up and down is what you're owed. One way to look at that is, I'm sorry, but it was never really designed to be a boat launch. And we don't make any money out of it as a boat launch. I mean, Hudson's was designed essentially as a boat launch, the operator was a boat launch, they maintained it back then. So we've got some, what I would call just some open issues with respect to some of the lands that were developed. And maybe it really should just be a conservancy that says, we're not gonna develop it at all, you know, we'll maintain it if you can, so it's not a hazard, but it's just an estate green space.
Maybe it's just as good, we don't put, don't identify it's across the street from house number.
Yeah.
I rescind that recommendation. That was there more so I could find it.
Yeah.
If you don't want people to find it.
I'll show you where it is.
Okay, thank you.
There probably aren't three people that would know about that one little park that's straight down around Seventh.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you happen to have lived here when that was the lift station.
So what you're telling me then, the village, where the lift station is down closer, close to Sally's Alley.
Yeah.
Are you saying then that it's just that little rectangular plot that is the villages?
I'm not sure what our basis for being located there is. Did we?
It's actually almost like right on the road, it's right next to our office.
Yeah, I suspect we said, okay, we can put it there. And we used our right of way and the, the fact that we don't have a, we don't have much of a high watermark problem there, so we can put this thing there. I don't know why it was moved from the end of Seventh Street down to Sally's Alley, other than the fact that it's a shorter run across the pond. The original building was probably four times that size. It was a small cement building, certainly bigger than Mark's office though. Considerably bigger, because I used to get out there every weekend, work on it as a kid, work on that. That was part of his job, was being a trustee.
I wonder what you were down there working on the lift station for?
This is back in the days when there were no child labor laws and all kinds of other liability issues. Ignore it, because, you know, that's just what you did. You lived here, you volunteered, you took care of it. That was his task, kind of public works. Take care of the lift station, big deal. But it was, but as I said, it was significantly larger than the current thing. So it's probably what, part of the reason why it could be moved as well is it's just shorter for the underground strip that goes across. But in terms of how we utilize all of these, these village-owned properties, I don't know if they all need to be constant through park space. And then the other, the only other issue I have was, would it make more sense and put less pressure on the plant, on, on the board if you operate it in a longer timeframe?
Yes.
You know? Because if, if, and if we're gonna do plans, which I happen to be a strong advocate of visioning and planning and getting stuff done, it's gotta be done within some kind of realistic timeframe. And there's easily, regardless of source, there's somewhere between two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars worth of spending here, right? Depending on what you do.
I found out the grants.
Yeah, could be a million, could be a million dollars. You know, we've been, you know, pretty good at having and maintaining a, a balance in the general fund, which allows us to do certain things, but we sure don't have that kind of bucks built up. So it might be more realistic to put it in the well.
The only thing I regret regarding that railroad property is that the discussions of that, several of them were done in closed session because it involved possible property transfer slash purchase. So I just ask you to exercise caution in that regard.
Okay.
And I think the, was one of the reasons for having a five-year plan to comply with grant capabilities, that they require a plan to be written over a five-year period or revised every five years? I thought I read that somewhere in here. But I think it's, wonderful job. It looks really good.
The, the motion is to adopt the plan as submitted, right? So on that particular issue, it states the village attorney will insert replacement language if park dedication funds no longer exist. Okay? So now, I would read that and say that there is something here that needs to be inserted.
Right.
That's a part of the document you have submitted. So in terms of amending the motion, I think what, I think what you have there is adequate. Or does that, should it be modified?
Well.
Or just simply that this should be left?
I, I think that probably the, the most appropriate thing to do, because if you're familiar with the issue, it's been one way and then the other way, the state legislature would say, park dedication will be pursuant to what your ordinances are. Something very general. I don't think you need to be very specific about that here.
Right, and I, we were just looking for that language.
Yeah. And which ordinance.
Dealing with that as well.
Yeah.
Oh, they've, they've reversed, the developers didn't like the fact they had to get money. They moved park dedication and they took that away and then it's, it's, it's been back and forth. Would that end up being something in statute? It is, it is. Then wouldn't the appropriate wording be that it would be consistent with statute and ordinance and local ordinance? Yeah, that's what I, I had drafted some of the details we require when authorized by statute, dedication, park land or funding of park approvals.
There you go.
Yeah, we just need to help. Ordinance and which statute and ordinance.
You also want, can we include it with the question marks where we can fill in some other information?
We'd be approving it with the language we're teaching, Steve.
Right. I'm saying there are other places in there where there are question marks, where they needed to fill in some information. Because lots of, lots of.
Yeah.
In fact, we're approving the essence of the document.
Pardon?
We're approving the essence of the document.
Or we could just say, although, although the, the board certainly concurs with ninety-nine point nine percent of everything that's here, since there are some blank spaces, do we just send it back until such time as you're able to fill in the blanks and then bring it back and we approve it?
I don't know.
You know? We certainly don't is doing anything but, you know, lauding the group for what they've accomplished. And you might want to ask them whether or not they'd want to put it into a longer timeframe for themselves.
Yeah.
Because it does kind of, if I was a member of the plan or the park board, it says we gotta get a lot done, which is also gonna put a real drain on the finances of the village. Okay, so. I will leave that to your and the discretion of the committees, how you wanna handle it. I'm not gonna tell you it's gotta be a twenty-year plan, okay? But that's certainly.
A park a year. A park a year. There's your twenty-year plan.
Yeah.
So now, there.
That's the one I want to start with.
All right. All right. So. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor and there is a second to approve the plan. Do those two parties want to withdraw that motion, make a different motion, which would then say that with the, to the equivalent of, although the board supports it, we are sending it back to the plan or the park board to fill in the unfilled-in sections? And at such time as should be, it will be resubmitted? Okay?
Is that okay? Because we've done a lot of work on that.
Oh, yeah, and it's a great piece of work.
You don't want anybody on the park board to think that we're honest.
No, I mean, it's one of the best pieces of empirical work I've seen, that's really good. Okay, thank you very much. Good discussion, new business from board or staff. Just a thought that I had, particularly as I was, you know, just finishing the budget process, reading the, the document that the park board had done, and some of the other work that we've been doing, and yet some of the surprises that people. And it was also just kind of, something that was brought home when I was at one of our last intergovernmental meetings. And I asked one of the townships, I said, what really happens to you when, with levity mess, how does that really affect you? He said, well, you know, primarily since roads are our number one expenditure within the township. It really, it generally translates to, and I'll oversimplify, we look at our twenty-year road plan. And if we normally had planned to do twenty miles of road, either re-surface, whatever, then we'll just, if we have less funds, then we'll just do less roads, okay? And if we were to look at the various functions within the village, public work should be a little bit different, but if we said, you know, how many, how many square miles of road do we have? And when is Second Street? When is Second Street, if we were to put that on a, on a chart, when would that be due to be repaved? First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street. From a capital planning perspective, when would we want to start loading those in the If you look at the PD, they pretty much have fixed day-to-day operating costs, they have some capital requirements. Certainly the dollars don't begin to re, don't begin to mimic public works, but nevertheless, issues we need to deal with. It could be put together, and should we be doing more of a strategic look at streets, sewer lines, water lines, big ticoni, I mean, the water tank up on the hill? In our lifetime, is that ever gonna have to be replaced? Do we ever have to put money into that devil? I mean, I don't know the answer to that question. But just, and then if you go through the other functional areas, where are the capital requirements gonna be here in the village over the next five to ten years? When we start to do the budget process, I mean, those just kind of drop right on down year to year. If you say, oh, you know, we're really running short or we're ahead, you know, do we move projects up, do we bring them back? It puts all of the, the day-to-day and the long-term thinking about the village into more of a strategic perspective. So that was just my observation and request to pursue in your committees if you think it's appropriate. Okay? Other than that, I don't have anything. Gloria?
Today at five was the deadline for filing candidacy for running.
Um, today at five was the deadline for filing candidacy for running for village trustee and our three incumbents have filed their paper on time, in any order. Um, we also had a fourth throwing his hat, Dan Ortner has decided to run for, for trustee and we welcomed him and, um, not quite sure about whether we're going to be required for the, to have a primary on the nineteenth of February, um, or maybe if there was a county or a state office that would require it. I, I haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
You will have, you will have one because of the judge.
Judges.
You have three.
Okay.
I have to eliminate one of the judges.
Okay. And, um, so we've got that on, uh, February nineteenth and, um, I'd just love to comment that, um, our new offices are wonderful and thank the residents for, um, making that happen and, and George and the committee for, um, doing all the hard work on it.
Okay, uh, let's see.
I have a question. I don't want to get over the top of these though.
Okay. Fine, we're kind of under new business.
Okay, um, I have a question from a new, from a resident who trains service dogs and she.
Like dogs for the blind?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, she, uh, she says there's an exemption for licensed training dogs, but she has a dog in training for the license, the service dog training. So, uh, she was wondering if there was an exemption for the younger dog in training.
Exemption from the?
Licensing requirement.
I haven't got a clue.
I would think in public welfare, with what I've got with Kathy, technically that would allow everybody with a dog to say, my dog is in training to become. And I would think until they become certified.
She's actually a person who does this on a regular basis. So she's not someone who just, you know, would.
I know, I think I know who, who it is.
She lives on that road.
And yes, I think she's brought the dogs in here. They're wonderful. It's amazing what, where, the homes that they go to and, and the work that the dogs do. And she did bring that question up once before and I want to say I was, was not able to, to get resolved for that as far as being able to do that, just because it does open up somewhat of a.
Yeah, I mean, as a practical matter, we can't act on that license. It would represent a change in ordinance, but from a practical perspective, which I think I hear you're telling is she raises and trains dogs for the purpose of giving them away.
Yes.
Which would be somewhat different than say if I still had my dogs, they're mine and, you know, they're residents of North Hudson, like I am. Whereas these dogs are here for the purpose of training, they're not going to leave us.
She goes to a weekly or twice-weekly class across the cities. She does all of the required.
Okay.
I didn't have an ordinance book. Mine's in for updating, so I wasn't sure what to look up.
Our ordinance book is just across the board. Got a cat or a dog, you pay a license, period, end of story. She's raising a rather unusual exception, which is today I might have four of them, she might be doing three or four of them. Since she then hands them off and she may not have any for her period of time. So they're like, stop paying a license for dogs that really aren't mine as such because I'm going to get rid of them and we're going to train them.
The only nice thing about having that tag on is those are valuable dogs and if they do got to, do get out, you have some type of a tracking mechanism.
What does the cost for a dog license, I saw it say?
Seven points. Is it ten? Ten dollars now?
Just from a practical, from a policy perspective, we can sort of take that under advisement, take a look at that and bring it up.
Yeah, that sounds really good.
And that's about as much as we can deal with tonight since it was not a agenda item. Okay. Thanks for doing that, for bringing that up.
You have a motion for number, uh, twelve?
Uh, we need to do that? We can, we can dispense, I think, with number twelve, especially given the lightness of the hour.
Since Mr. Zapp is a judge. Can I make the motion?
You certainly may.
I'm openly adjourned.
Second. Write this down in history. Should we look at it?
The headline in the paper will read, "Klein adjourns meeting not Zapp."
Don't you dare.